Good evening. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record reflect that a quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been properly convened and notice has been posted in compliance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. If you'll please stand and join me in the pledges. Community Outreach Church will offer the opening prayer for us this evening.
If you could bow your heads with me, please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this nether opportunity, Lord, to be able to serve our community together, Lord, and to ensure that the education of our students and their social and spiritual well-being, Lord God, is tended to. And Lord, I thank you right now that the anointing of the Holy Spirit would be upon every trustee, every member, the superintendent, all staff. And we pray for a blessing upon them today and the wisdom from you, Almighty God, to give them direction and discernment on how to lead and guide. We pray for your blessings and we thank you right now for a spirit of peace and unity over this meeting today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, will you introduce our student speaker for the Character Education trait for February, which is justice?
Yes, I absolutely will. I'd like to introduce everyone to La Monica, also known as Mo Shelton. And she joined the CCMS family in the 23-24 school year after moving here from Belton, Texas. Mo, come on, sorry heading this way. And quickly made her mark. Transitioning to a new school, Mo has tackled the challenges of resilience, excelling in both academics and extracurriculars. She's a standout athlete in basketball and track, a dedicated leader on the principal advisory committee and student council, and a consistent A/B honor roll student for ten consecutive grading periods. Great job. Her ability to balance it all with grace and determination makes her a role model among her peers. Through her hard work, leadership, and an unstoppable drive, La Monica continues to shine and inspire those around her.
What justice means to me. Justice is important. Justice is an important part of life because it ensures fairness and equality for everyone. As an eighth grader, I see justice as the idea that people should be treated fairly, no matter who they are. It means that rules should be, should apply to everyone the same way and that people should face consequences when they do something wrong. Justice is important because it keeps our world balanced and prevents unfairness. To me, justice is about doing the right thing even when it is difficult. It means standing up for what is right and speaking out when I see something unfair happening. For example, if a student is being bullied at school, justice means making sure that the bully faces consequences and that the victim support gets support. It also means treating, treating everyone with kindness and respect, no matter their background or differences. Justice is important and justice is also important in the legal system. When people break the law, they should be held accountable for their actions. However, justice is not just about punishment, it is also about fairness. Sometimes people make mistakes and justice means giving them a chance to learn and improve. I believe that true justice involves understanding why people act the way they do and finding ways to make things right instead of just punishing them. In history, there have been many examples of people fighting for justice. Leaders like Martin Luther King Jr. stood up against unfair laws and unfair laws to make sure that all people were treated equally. Without justice, the world would be full of unfairness and people would not feel safe or respected. Justice is not easy, always easy to achieve, but it is something we should all work hard towards. Whether it is in school, at home, or in society, I believe that treating others with fairness and respect is the best way to make the world a better place. As I grow older, I hope to continue standing up for justice and making sure that everyone is treated with fairness and respect they deserve.
Mo, hey, Mo, real quick before you go. Two things. We are really glad you're here. Thank you, and you did a great job. And then who's with you? Who'd you bring with you? Or who brought you?
My mom.
Your mom? Yeah, can you introduce her for? And who else is over there?
My principal.
Yes, ma'am.
Mine.
Great. Hey, you did a fantastic job and we appreciate it. Thank you. Great job. If I may, this time I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce you or reintroduce you to our newest principal of our elementary number nine that has yet to open, Ms. Denise Guerrero. Just stand up back there Denise and give us a wave. She's here with one of her mentors, Ms. Faircloth, her current principal. And of course, her family is to her right. So if everybody give her a warm welcome. So as you all know, she's currently the assistant principal at Bluebonnet. She has over twenty years' experience both in teaching and leading. And we're looking very forward and we're very excited that you accepted the challenge of a brand-new elementary school. Congratulations Denise.
Moving on, we're moving to our recognitions and presentations from CCHS Band, CCHS Choir, BMS Choir, BHS Choir, and VHS Art. Our presenter is Kendra Monk, the Director of Leadership Development and School Improvement.
Good evening. We have five recognitions from Fine Arts. And you're gonna be pretty amazed by what these students have done. So we're gonna bring up their teachers, Mr. Davis, CCHS Band.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. My name is Dalton Davis. I'm the very proud band director of Cedar Creek High School. I have a few of the students that have advanced to the final round of the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest. And I get the honor of bragging about them. This year, we had five students get a first division on a Class One solo, which is from a list called the PML, that is the most challenging. And they also performed it by memory, which is one of the requirements to make it to TSEC. Of those five, we have Alan Mata on saxophone, Sarah Nix, who couldn't be here tonight on French horn, Kenya Urinda on French horn, Alberto Vera, which is here on euphonium, and Trevor Culpepper on marimba. We also had an ensemble make it. We had a flute quartet, which Shayla is here as a representative of our flute quartet. And we had three other students who couldn't make it tonight. A little bit about each of these students that I can brag on. Trevor was here last board meeting as one of our featured students who made the region band. He made one ensemble. He is incredibly dedicated. He actually is going to go back to rehearsal after this because our drum line has a contest coming up. Alberto is our, one of our drum majors. And he really knocked it out of the park, learning his solo this year, and I'm really excited for him. Shayla's last two years was a featured solo on her marching band competitive show. And this year, she really did a great job with the piccolo part in their flute quartet. And then Alan is a 10th grader, but he started band in ninth grade. And so he went from ninth grade, starting instruments, you know, coming and working with me a little bit before and after school, and then really practicing really hard. And then all the way to making it to state this year for the very first time. And it's, I'm incredibly proud of him. And just the work that he's been able to put in and get from the Cedar Creek Band Program to not only join late, but to also fully invest himself and get to the highest level possible. So I'm incredibly proud of all of these students. So the next round, they will be performing after graduation, the Labor Day weekend in May. They will go to, I want to say the site this year is at Flukerville High School. And they'll compete with a judge, normally a collegiate-level judge, for critique on their solos. And if they get a one, they can get commended and they get a medal. And it's incredibly exciting. So these are the Cedar Creek High School TSEC finalists. Thank you, guys.
We're from Madison Shortis from CCHS Choir.
Hello there. My name is Madison Shortis, and I am the choir director at Cedar Creek High School. Before I introduce our students and discuss their achievements, I'd like to take a moment and say thank you to our fabulous school board for your unending support of the arts. Can we give them a round of applause? The support of our school board, Principal Casey Stagman, administrators and community allows fine arts programs such as the CCHS Choir to flourish. I've seen firsthand the effects of fine arts programs improving student academics, campus involvement, leadership skills, and consistent student attendance. The students who are always there are the ones in our fine arts programs, no matter what. Two weeks ago, our district sent students from Cedar Creek High School to UIL Solo and Ensemble. Every Cedar Creek High School student for choir in attendance received the highest rating of a one on Class One solos, so consistent excellence across our program. They are pictured above, and they are in front of you. Above, we have Tatiana Contreras first. Tatiana is a new student in our program. Tatiana is almost completely blind. And she recently was featured on our social media as a focus student. So if you haven't seen that presentation of hers yet, please go check it out on the social media. She is fantastic. Then in front of me, I have Mia Benevides. She is a senior at Cedar Creek High School. She is also currently slotted to be our salutatorian, which is very exciting. Then we have Chloe Hunter, who is new to our program, and Alex Espinal, who is new to our program. Every student received a Class One solo. You can see them pictured there with their medals at the competition. Due to our students' high scores and difficult repertoire, they have been invited to and will be performing at TSEC UIL State Solo and Ensemble in late May, around Labor Day weekend as well. I just wanted to say thank you again for the recognition of these students. And I also wanted to point out that Chloe Hunter and Alex Espinal, this is their first time performing a solo at an event such as this. Chloe performed a folk song to kind of enter her into the world of voice. And Alex, this is his second year in choir ever. He is our top section leader in the high school choir, and he did an astounding job at solo and ensemble. So thank you for your support of the arts, and let's give a cheer for the Cedar Creek High School Choir students.
Next up, we'll hear from Bastrop Middle School Choir with Gillian Nightever.
Hi, my name is Gillian Nightever, and this is Taylor Piercy. And she recently was the first student from our school in a very long time to, from Bastrop Middle School, in a very long time to participate in the TMEA Region 18 Honor Choir Audition Process. So this is very similar to what they do at the high school level, where they learn a bunch of music that's really challenging compared to what they're doing in class every day with their peers. They learn it all outside of class. They get practice tracks. And so Taylor had to learn her part on three separate songs outside of school. And she got a little bit of help from me, but she was here or at our school in the mornings, practicing and working really diligently. And then she did a blind audition. So she went in front of, well, like a screen where there were judges behind that didn't know who she was. They just heard her voice. And out of seventy singers in the audition room that she was in, she placed sixteenth. And she made the region honor choir for seventh grade. So she has worked really hard, and she would never say this about herself, but she totally deserves all the recognition. So she has worked really hard and did a really great job on this.
Now we'll welcome Jenny Shu, BHS Choir.
I'm gonna ask them to face you. There we go. Look at that. I see enough of them. Board members, just, it is a pleasure for me to just be able to share and also brag on my students. Bastrop High School had seven students entered in the UIL Solo Ensemble Contest. And we are proud to tell you that. It is seven out of seven. So all seven of them got superior ratings. On this side is Jacob Clark. He is a junior. He sang "The Vagabond." And Andrea Mangandi is a sophomore. She sang "Seben Crudel," it is an Italian piece. And Bento, right in front of you, he is actually a Brazil Foreign Exchange student. He was originally in my piano four class. And he quickly realized that Mrs. Shu loves the choir students more. And very quickly jumped ship. So he had never been in choir, but is ready to tackle anything if you throw it in his way. And he sang "Gambler, Don't Lose Your Place" by John Jacob Niles. And Savannah Mendoza is a freshman. She sang "The Shenandoah." And Mariana Contreras sang "Seben Crudel," also an Italian piece. There are three students, wait, two students that are not able to come. Amber Vest is a junior, and she sang "Linden Lee." Also Amber Lee Wilson sang a German piece, "Vegan Lead" by Brahms. And just very proud of these students. Six of the seven pieces are all Class One solos. And as you all know, that Class One solos are on the PML list. PML stands for Prescribed Music List. So there is a committee that will look over music and deem if it is hard enough to be a Class One piece. So we always want to sing, push them to, to challenge them and push them to sing a Class One solo. If you memorize a Class One solo and get a superior rating, that's what we're all here about, that they get to go to the state. TSSC is Texas State Solo Ensemble Contest. And that is end of May, May 26th is our date for doing it. It is such an opportunity for these young singers to be adjudicated and get very positive feedbacks, critiques. And I push them to, to their limit. And they will feel that I'm giving them a lot of criticisms during the day. And after a contest, some of them felt like they didn't do their best. But when they saw the critique sheet, they realized everything on the critique sheet is everything I said. So whether they did it or they didn't do it, that is it. And they can attest to you that I have my personal collection of all the critique sheets that I have done throughout the years with high school students. And so for example, if Jacob sang "The Vagabond", I show him all the Vagabond critique sheets from years past and what those, what he could learn from my past students. So that is just the key of giving them the best chance, best, best opportunity out there to learn solo performances. And I will always tell a lot of my colleagues that I wish the solo ensemble is earlier in the year. That will give me a chance to develop their vocal skills before we have to sing choir pieces. But without further ado, I just want to present these five out of seven in front of you that they made it to state. So.
Our final recognition is Teacher Jeremiah Flynn, BHS Art and Photography. I will serve as Mr. Flynn. In early February, in early February, he had some students, Denver Jade, Mia, and Madeline, competed at the Visual Arts Scholastic Event. And this is the first time that BHS has competed at this event in years. The students advanced to area judging where they scored a four, which is the highest rate given in the competition before going to state. And so you can see their works on the screen right there. And the goal for next year from this teacher is to triple the amount of students competing as well as getting a state qualifier.
Next, we'll move into our open forum. The board welcomes comments from district citizens and employees, individuals or group representatives who have signed up, may speak, focusing on public education topics. Please note, the board cannot discuss or act on issues not listed on the agenda. The purpose of an open forum is to gather input only. Agenda-related issues will be addressed at the appropriate time. Speakers will be heard in the order of their request. An open forum is limited to thirty minutes. With, we have three speakers signed up, and they're allotted three minutes each. And first up is Caleb Salas.
Hello, good afternoon. So we are all 11th grade students from Colorado River Collegiate Academy. And we would like to request board recognition for two teachers. I'll be talking about Mrs. Larson. We believe Mrs. Larson should be honored by the board for the way that she has gone above and beyond in the past several months. Mrs. Larson teaches ninth grade biology and is an adjunct professor with Austin Community College. She teaches about half of the ninth grade class biology in her classes at ACC. Ms. Berry taught the other half of the ninth grade class, and they split their grading pretty evenly. Since we have lost Ms. Berry, Ms. Larson has taken over teaching all fifty-two freshman students biology, and she grades everything. She has sacrificed a lot of the fun things her class usually does so she can grade everything. Many questions on the exam are free response, and she has many creative projects and assignments. So this takes lots of time to grade. Even as she spends so much time grading, she makes sure at the end of every six weeks to give all of the students the opportunity to pass and get the best grade they can. She truly looks out for all of her students, even under this highly stressful situation. On top of teaching double the students she usually does, she is helping me study advanced placement biology to take the test at the end of the year. This is yet another task that she previously had helped with. Her sacrifices impact me and my peers substantially. Mrs. Larson has gone above and beyond to make sure her students are successful, even after losing a friend and colleague. She has even expressed to me how proud she is of the ninth grade class for coming out of their free fall after losing their beloved teacher. She has shown time and time again how much she cares for all of us. We believe she should be recognized for her prominence in helping the school heal after a tragedy.
Next is Juan Pablo Ruiz Vernaza.
Hi, I'm also an 11th grader at Colorado River Collegiate Academy. I'm also, I will be talking about the second teacher that we believe deserves recognition from the board, Mr. Twizia Mana. We call him Mr. T, so I will be referring to him as Mr. T for the rest of the speech. But, you know, basically, as said, we lost our physics teacher, Ms. Berry, as of late of November of last year. And ever since then, due to the fact that we couldn't hire another physics teacher, Mr. T has basically taken up all teaching physics. And without him, we wouldn't really know much of anything. Before, before this, he teaches pre-cal to 11th graders. This is, it's AP pre-cal. He just learned the AP format. And he's, he does a lot of things like making quizzes, assignments. And he does grade lectures and prints out packets of notes. And he also teaches Algebra II to sophomores and, which are 10th graders, and a few, few 11th graders who still aren't at the pre-cal level. He also does assignments and quizzes pretty often for them too. But it was very noticeable for physics. It is clearly taking a toll on him since every week, again, he has to make assignments, notes, readings, and quizzes to test our knowledge of physics. He also lets students come into his classroom if they need any help with assignments or anything. You can ask him questions. And this has helped us a lot greatly because, like I said, we are actually starting to understand the material. He also is giving us lectures, which is really nice, actually. We know the content a lot, and for STEM majors such as myself and some of the other kids there, we find him very useful, and which is why we believe he should be recognized by this board.
Thank you. It's always nice to hear from students from our district in this setting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, signed up is Christian Palacios.
Good afternoon. Bastrop ISD is so happy to be in front of you all. My name is Christian Palacios. I am from the office of Congressman Michael Cloud. The reason I come before you today is because I want to get very, very political. I'm just totally kidding, everybody. It got real quiet in here, yeah. No, the reason why I'm here is because, as y'all know, a lot of these great teachers that y'all have have discussed giving kids the greatest opportunity to really achieve a lot of things here. And from what it looks like, y'all have a lot of great things going on here. So congratulations on that. What we have here today is the Congressional Art Competition, which is, again, no politics involved. What it does is it gives the kids in our district the opportunity to really showcase their artwork. And as I saw up there on the board, I was amazed, blown away. So congratulations on that again. Can y'all hear me? Okay. So on this one, the competition will end in April, April 4th, 2025. I do have the slides with me from there, with my cards as well, to give out to the rest of you. Just kind of want to go over some things with it. Won't take any but a minute. First place, the artwork will be displayed in the US Capitol for one year. And the winner receives two round-trip tickets to attend the Congressional Institute's annual winner celebration in DC. So again, other people in their district, the winners get to come all together, a round trip to DC. It's such a fantastic opportunity. I'm actually kind of jealous of this because we didn't have this when I was in school. Second place, the artwork will be displayed in Congressman Cloud's Washington DC office for one year. So anytime you yourselves go to DC and you talk with Congressman Cloud and you get a tour of the trip, you will get to go to his office and see the artwork there displayed. And then the People's Choice Award. Artwork is displayed in Congressman Cloud's Victoria, that's me, the district office, and the Corpus Christi district office. So that's all I have for today. I do have a couple of other things. Congressional Service Academy, if anyone here, any students are willing to go to the armed forces and want, you know, Congressman Cloud's nomination, feel free to reach out to our office about that too. We have so many great opportunities that we would love to discuss with y'all. But came here before you today, just But came here before you today just to introduce myself and again, y'all ever need anything, please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Next, we'll move into our public hearing. The public hearings on the district annual report, including the Texas Academic Performance Report. Our presenter is Rachel Repke, the Director of Accountability and Compliance.
Thank you for having me here, Mr. President, Vice President, Board Trustees, Mr. Edwards. Yes, so our 2324 District Annual Report. In this presentation, we will provide an overview of the sections of the 2324 Annual Report. Please note that all the data included in this report pertains to the 22, 23, and 2324 school years, thus representing historical data which has been shared in previous board meetings over the last several months. Tonight, I will summarize the contents of the report rather than reviewing the entire document as the full report exceeds 800 pages. The complete report will be made available to the public for access on our district website, at the district service center, and at each campus very soon. During the presentation, I will highlight the board meetings where this information was discussed in greater detail. The district has utilized much of this information in the report to guide campus and district improvement plans for the current year. Ultimately, this report serves to conclude the previous school year. So this should not be new information. In this report, we have eight sections. The first section is the 2324 Texas Academic Performance Report, or TAPER. There's included in the annual report, the district TAPER, and each campus's TAPER. Second section is the PMS Financial Reports. That is from the 2223 financial school year. There's one for the district and then one for each of the campuses. The third section is the district annual, I mean, excuse me, district accreditation status. That is from the year 2223. The fourth section is our campus performance objectives, which are the campus improvement plans, again, from 2324, so last year's campus improvement plans. Section five is a report on violent or criminal incidences on campuses. Section six is the student performance in post-secondary institutions. So there'll be one for each of our high schools. Section seven is the progress toward board adopted House Bill III goals. And then the final section, section eight, is the 2324 TAPER glossary. So first section, the 2324 Texas Academic Performance Report, or TAPER. This report is a compilation of TEA data from our PMS and our student assessment data. In this report, it includes a wide range of information on the performance of students for the district and at each campus. Performance is shown disaggregated by student demographics, including ethnicity and socioeconomic status. It provides extensive information on our school and district staff, programs, and student demographics. Also in this report, I wanted to share that the TAPER information has been shared previously during the August State of a District address. In that address, our former Chief of Staff, Dr. Warford, had gone over our data. Also, it was presented at the August board meeting this school year. The data has informed our planning for the 2425 school year and was instrumental in developing our district and campus improvement plans, which this board has already approved those plans for the current school year we're in. The TAPER does not include the A through F ratings or district distinctions. Due to ongoing litigations with 24 accountability, those have not been released by TEA. So in this section, section one, looking at the TAPER, I just wanted to give you an overview of the data that is included. You have several tables worth of data in the TAPER report, again, for the district and each of the campuses. But here, I just wanted to provide a snapshot of each of the sections that are in the TAPER. So the first section you will see there, this is our district data. You'll see our star performance percentages at approaches or above. So approaches for star is the passing level. There are two levels beyond that, at meets and masters. But this data includes all of those students who had passed at approaches, meets, or masters. So approaches and above. The blue bar represents our data from 2223. And then the red bar is last year's data, the 2324. So you can see that broken down by all subjects, which include reading, math, science, and social studies. And then each of the bars for each of those subject groups. You will notice that we did have a decrease from the 2223 to the 2324 in reading, math, and science, and then a slight increase in social studies, last year's data. The next section that you'll see in your TAPER is annual growth. So this is looking at students' performance, their individual growth from their previous state assessment to their current state assessment. So the light green there from 2223, and then the dark green is last year's growth at 2324. So you can see there, that is broken down by reading and math, and then the combination of both reading and math together. So you can see there, we did have some decreases from the previous year to last year. Another section in the TAPER is the college career military readiness. So you can see there in yellow, the most current data that is in the TAPER is from the graduating class of 2023. So you'll see there, the dark yellow is the data from the 2223 school year. That is the most current data in the TAPER. It is a year behind for college career military readiness. In comparison to the light yellow at 20, for the year 2122. So you can see a slight decrease there also. The next section of the TAPER, again, breaks down our student demographic information. So you can see there, the blue, again, being 2223, the red being last year, 2324. So looking at this data, our economically disadvantaged population has decreased slightly, but we have had an increase in our students who are being identified as emergent bilinguals and our students who are receiving special education services and our students who are identified as gifted and talented. Those have all increased. We have had a slight decrease last year and our students who are identified as at risk. Also in the TAPER, it provides attendance information. The attendance information in the TAPER does lag. So you will see there, the most current year that is in the TAPER was the 2223 in red. And then the comparison to 2122. So you can see there that we did have an increase in our attendance between those two years. So that is very good. And our chronic absenteeism, we had a big decrease there. So we are really attacking that chronic absenteeism. Again, that data is now a couple of years old, but in your board meetings, I think the last meeting, we had a conversation about how our attendance is progressing. Okay, so that concludes really the section over the TAPER. I'm going to move into section two. So section two is the 2223 financial annual reports. So on your screen there, you just have a screenshot of what that report looks like. Again, that includes a report for a whole district and then one of those reports for each of our campuses. The district report will include revenues, expenditures, distributions, or just, and tax rates, and fund balance. The campus report is the expenditures by objective, expenditures by function, and then program expenditures by the program. So again, the most current one there is, in your report, is the 2223. But Renee Wingard, our Director of Finance, she shared with you in the November board meeting, our 2324 Financial Integrity or First Rating, which was superior, and she had a presentation over that. But again, for our annual report, it includes the 2223. Section three is our 2223 Accreditation Status. So again, this is a couple of years old. But TEA assigns an accreditation status to a school district, usually annually. The status is accredited, accredited warned, accredited probation, and not accredited revoked. The 2223 accreditation status for Bastrop ISD was accredited. The accreditation status is granted based upon academic accountability, financial accountability ratings, data integrity, program area deficiencies through results-driven accountability. And again, we do not have a rating for last year because we are still waiting to get our A through F accountability ratings due to the ongoing litigations with that. Section four is our campus performance objectives or our campus improvement plan. So each campus has developed and implemented a campus improvement plan. Each campus improvement plan includes performance objectives, which are approved by the board. So again, this year's, the, the 2425 campus improvement plans, Kendra Monk, our Director of School Improvement and Leadership Development, presented those to you guys in November. But what's included in this annual report is last year's campus improvement plans, so the 2324. Those are posted on our district website and on each of the campus's websites. I have linked them into our presentation. But once you have the full annual report with all of those district and campus improvement plans, you will see that those are reviewed as a little screenshot there. They are formatively reviewed in November and February, and then the summative review comes in April. And so when you're looking at those, you'll notice the green circle that will have a percentage, that's the status of completion at that time. If it has a blue arrow, as in this image here, that means that they are going to continue that performance objective into the following school year. If it has a full circle at 100%, 100%, that means they completed that objective for that school year. And if it has a red X, that means that they have chose to discontinue that performance objective for the school year. So those completed plans from last year are included in the annual report with the final status of the review. Section five is a report on violent or criminal incidences. So this report will include the number and rate and type of violent or criminal incident that occurred on each campus to the extent that is permitted by FERPA. So when you are reviewing your packet, you have that data broken down by campus. It tells you the incident that occurred and gives you a little brief description of that incident. But you will notice that your data is, is hidden by an asterisk, and that is because, based off of FERPA, I cannot reveal if it was five or less. So you will notice all of the incidences for all of our campuses have been at five or less. But I do have summative data to share with you. So every state is required to implement a policy requiring that a student attending a persistently dangerous public school be allowed to attend a safe public school within the school's local education agency. In Texas, a school is defined as persistently dangerous if the number of discipline offenses related to Title V felonies, which is possession of weapons, drugs, or alcohol and/or serious misbehavior exceeds 1% of the discipline incidents that have occurred within the past three years. The incident rate for these offenses in Bastrop ISD over the past three years, three years, is 1/10 of 1%, which is 90% below the threshold for persistently dangerous school criteria, which means Bastrop ISD is a safe district and has safe schools. So you can see here that summarized data. In Bastrop ISD, last year, we had 17 total incidences. And our enrollment last year was just over 13,000 students. So you can see there, our district incident rate is .001 or 1/1,000 of a percent. To the graph, to the left, you can see that our elementary's 0% of reported criminal or violent incidences. Our middle schools is zero, excuse me, is .0004 or 4/10,000 of a percent. And our high school is at .0037 or 37/10,000 of a percent. So you can see, again, to be classified as a dan, or persistently dangerous school, you have to hit that 1% marker, and we are well below that 1% marker. So we in Bastrop ISD have safe schools. Section six is student performance in post-secondary institutions. So this data includes the number of total graduates disaggregated by attendance in institutions of higher education, the number of students within each GPA reporting band. So this comes to us from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. The data that they look at has come from the 2122 graduating class, so spring of 22 graduates. Again, this report retracts students, tracks students who are in their first year of Texas Higher Education Institutes who attend and their GPA at the conclusion of their first year in post-secondary institution. So that's why it lags, because it's after they've actually completed that year in a post-secondary institution. So that data is there, and I've also included the link where you can look up other districts as well. Section seven is progress of the district and each campus toward meeting board adopted House Bill III goals. So those House Bill III goals look at early childhood literacy and math proficiency plans and our camp, our CCMR or College Career Military Readiness plans. So this was actually shared with you, our progress on these at the November 19th board meeting by Dr. Amanda Brantley, our former, former Director of College Career Military Readiness, and Jennifer Eberly, our Chief of Staff. And so in your packet and in our annual report, I included that presentation, so you can see the progress towards those. And then section eight, that brings us to the final section here, is the TAPER glossary. So TEA prepares a glossary that provides definitions, describes methodologies, and a list of resources for each data point in the TAPER. So that is included also in our annual report that we publish to the public and will post on our website. So that brings us to this. Again, the report will be posted on our website and will be available at our district office and at each campus for paper copies. And then there is my contact information if anybody has questions, and I will get the answers for them. So that brings us to the end of the presentation, so I wanted to take any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. At this time, we will open the floor for public comments regarding this presentation. Please note that during hearings or open forums, the board's purpose is to gather input. The board will not respond to questions or engage in two-way dialogue. However, we will have administration respond to your questions. So if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment or have questions, please do so now. If you want to speak in the microphone, that's fine. Or you can, or she can repeat it, that's easier.
Now, I understand a child gets to the grade third, or third grade. So on third grade is really where it's, because they haven't learned to read, haven't learned their, they are, my question is, on this approach grade level or above, grade three, we have, as a district, we have grade level. Now, is that grade level or above, and that means that they're not meeting that grade level? And then for at meets grade level or above, that means they're just barely getting there? Is that what that means? And then at masters grade level, the numbers are varying at that point?
Okay, so the question is looking at our third grade students, but really about the vocabulary of approaches, meets, and masters. So our students who are at approaches does mean that they have met the, the passing standard for the star assessment, but in moving into the next grade level, they will need some targeted intervention and support.
So this is what our teachers, a question here, our teachers in the fourth grade, fifth grade, they're met with children that are not, they don't have the skills. So I can see the frustration in a teacher at that point, that that would be a huge problem for them. Because when you get to that third grade level, you know, if we got only 9%, or what was that number that I was looking at just a moment ago? Yeah, as a district, 9%, 13% at masters grade level. Is that correct?
So, okay, so meets grade level means that they are prepared for the next grade level. They may need some targeted intervention, but they really are prepared for the next grade level. Masters is, yes, they are prepared, they're not going to need targeted intervention. They really have the, the skills, like, you know, critical thinking skills that they could do outside of maybe the, the norm of the, the grade level curriculum.
Okay. So we're still looking at 30% at meets grade level or above? So we're still looking at 30% at meets grade level or above. We've got that 20-23, 66, and then your 24 at 30%.
Yes, ma'am. So I know
I think that's why we're showing that we're really, our grade level is not doing
Yes, and this is a big, you know, data point that we address in our campus improvement plans. We do put in strategies every year to reflect in, you know, what are we going to do to meet the needs of our students? And so that is in our campus improvement plans. And I know that Ms. Eberly can speak more to the pieces of instruction that are happening there.
I just have one more question also. Why is it that we've been looking for these numbers, the results? It feels like a year now, and we have not had any, you know, where are we on the grade level? You know, where are we on to meet, to meet the levels that the children need to be at? I mean, why haven't, is there some problem that we're not getting? The results? Yes, yes.
Because there's ongoing litigation, and so TEA is not allowed to
So can I ask what that litigation is? Yes?
Basic terms, it's that the state changed the rules of the accountability system during, and that's why you see dips, not only in Bashtrop ISD, but across the entire state. So school districts said, wait a minute. You cannot start a school year, change the rules and the objectives and the standards in the middle of the year and expect us to perform. That, nobody would think that was right. So a couple of things that we did in advance of this is we put in a brand-new curriculum. And Jennifer, I'll let you speak to our initiatives. And we recognize we have work to do here. I want to be clear about that. But I also want to be very clear that we're doing the work. Our principals, our teachers, and our students are doing great at this point, and we're looking forward to seeing our results. We feel that we have presented the results, as we've been allowed to present all year long. I think Rachel went through it in great detail. We presented at the State of the District address, several different board meetings, and we can talk about that more, but if you want, Jennifer.
And some of the things we've done, we have put in a new curriculum. This is your number two of that, that we've implemented it. One of the things that also needs to be noted, that when we're looking at our STAR results, not only has the accountability system changed, but the actual assessment has changed for our kids. And so they're being assessed in different ways than they have before. So we're working on implementing new curriculum. We're working on filling the instructional strategies on a daily basis, addressing their needs, on top of adapting to an ever-changing assessment that has us thinking or manipulating things in different ways. So there's multiple layers to this, and we've put lots of initiatives in place over the last year and a half. And we're working to continue to monitor this and improve student outcomes, because we know that's the end result that we all want. We want our students to achieve, and that's what we've been putting in place for the last year and a half, some of those initiatives.
So what is I don't know.
Okay.
All kids are tested online. It's all computer-based, so a child can't hold a piece of paper and hold a book. They, if they make, if they make an error, they, it's not as easy as rubbing out the A and putting the B. They have to be able to click back. And then there's a lot of options within this. And our, we've had students speak to this on their own here. And again, please don't hear this as excuses. We're adapting, we understand it. And so what we've had to do is push this all the way back so that early childhood is, has heavy doses of good, rich reading, but also computer-based instruction, because that's the way of the world. I would argue that if we've taught them correctly, and if we're doing our jobs, they will retain it, and we will continue to do that. I do agree, the screen is different. We can, that's a whole nother conversation for another day. But we believe that we've put the things in place that you're going to see marked improvements, and we're looking forward to it for our kids and for our community.
There are numbers. And they are, you know, again, from the graduating class of 2022. So it is kind of really old data, and those, you know, students had some interruptions in their education with COVID, that high school class. But there is, yes, there is data in there that is included in the annual report. Again, it was just an 800-page report, so we had picked the highlights to share here. But it will be included in the one that's published online.
So if we go to TEA, we can get that information?
So, yeah, it's on our district, the whole report. So all eight sections are in one 800-page PDF that will be published on our district website and also is housed at the district office. If you want a paper copy, we can get that.
So you said there was curriculum that you're using?
Absolutely. In the younger grades, we're using Amplify for reading, and we're using Eureka for math.
If not, we'll close the public hearing. I'm sorry, yes, sure. No, we're bored also. We realize, but we, as a board, we have been looking at a lot of this information even since June of last year, and have gone over it several times. I thought our board has already looked at it. But if not, you, please ask, ask away.
That's what I was saying. So I just want some clarification on the approaches grade level, meets grade level. So the approaches, if we're talking, let's talk third grade. So if we're approaching grade level or above, then those students have at the reading level first grade? Maybe not even first?
Not necessarily their reading level. The assessment, you know, is going to assess their writing, it's going to assess comprehension. So it's not necessarily just what is your lexile or reading level. It has a lot more to the assessment of writing. They have to write, you know, basically like an essay, extended constructed response. And there's writing questions, grammar questions, comprehension questions. So it, yes.
It does include writing?
They, the state never told us. It was graded by AI before the rubric was set up. We had no clue. So there was a, part of the lawsuit is this, there was an inordinate amount of zeros across the entire state. Kids got scored zeros for work that AI didn't pick up, that maybe a person grading their paper would have. And again, this isn't just unique to us. You can look across the state. You can look at the lawsuit itself and see what districts are claiming. But I do want you to know, it's not just picking up book and getting a lexile or getting a reading score.
Okay, so it's more, okay, so it's more, and then the masters, because I'm looking at, I pulled the report from TEA, and the numbers were a little concerning, especially with, because I'm going to flip it. Again, on the third, third-grade reading, especially at master's grade, that means, I'm assuming that's, they're right there at third grade. They should have minimal trouble going to fourth grade. 91% is going to have problems. I mean, is, am I looking at that correctly? Because 9% pass, that means 91% are not masters. So they're going to fall somewhere between meets and approaches, which again, can go back to fourth grade. We're going to have, there's an undue burden on fourth-grade teachers, fifth-grade teachers. As a, now, it's been decades since I've been in the classroom as a high school teacher, but I always looked downward to middle school, and it's like, because I was a math teacher. What the heck? They don't even know what 2 plus 2 is, folks. So I am concerned seeing this, and I know we have improvement plans, but I've also looked at those, and they just seem very generic. I'm concerned, because I've also looked in past records, and I do agree with you, because I have a sister and a niece that it's in the school, and my sister absolutely hated this year's because it was computerized, and they weren't used to it. But when I look back to '21, '22, '23, '24, I don't really see too much improvements on, 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 on the scores here. And I'm concentrating on the third grade, simply because that is a basic. So I see the improvement plans, but are they really working? Or is it just something because that's what we're mandated to do?
Things talking to that, too, is you talk about the one grade level coming into the next. That vertical alignment piece is part of why we implemented some of the strategies that we did, is making sure we've got that consistent, that Kendra's teaching this to mastery, first grade's teaching this, and that we're all teaching the same thing, not only within the same school, but across our entire district, so that when kids do have the mobility, we know that they're getting the different things. Now, as we talk about turning the ship and adding all those things in, that's, that's where we're continuing to go, and we see it. But knowing that that is a piece that has to have that vertical alignment, whether it's in reading, whether it's in math, whether it's in science, we've got to have that there. So that is a piece of what we've implemented to address just exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, okay. And then something else, toward the end of the report, I was looking at, it talked about the teachers, where is it? Basically, the degrees that they have. And some were the, they were non-degree. I think it was 84 non-degree, which was a dramatic increase. And again, thinking back to what happened in April and May, when teachers came up here, they were not certified, and then they were taking courses. And I think even last board meeting, you know, I asked, there's a new university coming on. It's like, okay, did we learn our lesson to make sure they were accredited? So this 84 non-degree teachers, does that mean they're not degree? Or, for instance, I have got an accounting degree. Let's forget about my teaching certificate right now, but I've got an accounting degree, and I'm teaching, is that means I'm not degreed? Explain the non-degree status, I guess.
Yes, it does mean they do not have a degree, but I'll give this over to our
Of course. So we do, as part of our Grow Your Own program, we do have some non-degreed. It's a small percentage.
Yeah, 84.
It's actually, we're down to about 50. The majority closer to 150, 170 are degreed and not in the area. They, as we know, not as many people are going into teaching. And so many of the people might have accounting degrees, and they're going to get into an ACP alternative program. And we are using our DOI plan, along with our kind of Grow Your Own, trying to encourage some of our people that live in the community, that have children in the community, to go back to school and finish. But we are working very closely with our DOI plan to make that happen sooner. And we, we are monitoring scores along with, you know, certification area. We have data from last year. So definitely really trying to encourage that Grow Your Own, to get people that live in the community to, that want to be in our schools already.
To do that, then, okay. Also, when I was looking at, again, back in the, kind of in the back of the report, I noticed, that was the no degree. Turnover rate seems to be high, but I know we're addressing that. I also saw, and I apologize, I'm not funding, I thought I highlighted it, but it also the experience, you know, teacher experience and such as that. And again, I went back three years, and it seems like at the district, teachers had, and I probably might get this wrong or backwards, but it seemed like we had teachers' experience of 10, but that at the district, it was five. So right away, I'm seeing, I thought, okay, is Bashtrop kind of a stepping stone for teachers to come in, get their three to five years, skedaddle elsewhere? It just seems like the experience is, you're not, I mean, I know it's average. You got some veterans, but at the same time, it seems like this is a very young district, which is kind of strange.
I think it's becoming more common. You know, people leaving the profession, moving. I mean, I'm sure there are people that come here, you know, do their first few years and then go to other districts. But we are doing, we have many things in place to make sure that we're getting information. We do stay interviews. We don't want to wait until you resign, right? By then, you've made your decision. So we go out to campuses and listen to them. Jen goes out every spring and talks to them, what are the things that keep you here? We have really strong mentor programs. We're looking at aligning the mentor programs to specifically the type of teacher, right? So if you're DOI, still working on your ACP, you're going to need a little bit different support than somebody maybe that went through an educator prep program. So making sure that we're really lining out that support that they're providing campus principals. We have amazing principals that provide support. And then I think just, you know, really like we're opening up, we started posting for the '25-'26 school year and giving our current staff an opportunity to apply to the campuses that they want to be at. And, you know, making sure that they're teaching the grade level that they want to teach, that they are getting the support that they need on campus. So we are putting a lot of things in place to really encourage them to stay past the five-year mark.
That's hard. Yes.
Report, is my mic on? It is, there it goes. Our average is 10.5 years' experience, the state's is 11.1. So this isn't, again, this is not something that is unique to us. It's a state thing that we're all facing. It has to do with teacher pay. The amount of expectation that's placed in our classrooms in this time, I'm not going to get on my soapbox, but there's a lot of factors that, again, when you look at that report, it goes across the state. You can compare us, there's nothing that isn't uncovered. In fact, I'd ask you, well, no, I won't say that. But you can look at that, and again, it's, we're 10 and 1/2. The state's 11.1.
No, I was, again, it just was striking as
And we, the efforts we're putting in are great. We hope, we hope to exceed the state. Our goal is not the state, we want to do better, of course. But I just think it's worth noting that, again, it's just not us. It's something that we're all striving for. Housing costs here, the lack of housing, it's, there's just a lot of factors that play into it.
And not that.
But thank you for the question.
And we do also have an audit that TASB is coming in to do a pay audit, to look at our pay, to see if there's anything that we need to adjust or consider there. And we're also working on like critical need areas, your special education bilingual stipends, making sure that they're keeping up with surrounding districts.
Was the, was the graduation part of this?
Yes, that was the section six that I believe that gentleman was asking about.
And again, just clarification, I noticed, so Bashtrop High graduated back when this was going, what, about 800 students, give or take? was going, what, about eight hundred students, give or take? And granted, some.
I think it says less than that.
Was it less than that?
What is that number?
Okay.
Yeah.
Typically, three hundred.
Okay, well, then this makes this easy, okay. Because I was going to say, still though concerns me, and I think it goes back so also with the, the rates, is when you have students, you've got about a hundred and three students either attending a four-year college or a two-year college, and you, they're, you know, twenty of them, you know, less, less than two point five as far as GPA. Granted, I know freshmen, you're out, you're, it's a little candy shop out there, I understand. What do we try to do to keep them, don't go too crazy in your freshman year, kids? I mean, how, how do we try to calm them in that?
I don't know.
Ardu, ardu, ardu. Well, yeah.
Oh, they're in college.
Let's, let's think about that.
Threaten them to come home.
This is the problem with the classroom. It's not our, at some point, the parent has to do something, Carol.
Okay.
Yeah. But as far as advising them for post-secondary and post-secondary life, we do have the college and career centers where we have college advisors and counselors. We have our college access specialist. So we do have a group of people along with counselors, teachers. We consider every staff member to be an advisor to students, so working really hard to get them there. Remember, that was twenty-one, twenty-two data. So these students experienced asynchronous learning, potentially were on the computer part of their high school year. So while it's not, you know, thirty-five percent is not necessarily what we want to see, we're continuing to implement things that we want to increase our students going to college or any post-secondary. I mean, work-based learning, trade school, we are really pushing that as well for our students.
I commend the district, because I know in the, in the package, there was the CTE and PTEC.
Correct.
There's a lot going on, I know, and I realize that exposed the students to a lot of things out there.
Yes.
And, and, and I'm, I'm going to brag on Red Rock Elementary School, because they, they shot off in a spaceship, a couple of kids.
Yes, very cool.
Yeah. I don't know, they probably thought it was, but, and I, so I know that the, the school is doing well and, and trying to prepare them for college and, yes, it's, it's a world out there. So, okay. And, that's it. I'm done. In that section.
Does any other member of the public here have any comments or questions? If not, we'll close the public hearing and move on with our agenda. Yeah, this one.
I'm a parent, and I was wondering what kind of, what's being implemented to help parents understand? I have had a child that was, was on, you know, we needed to intervention, and we had some, had to get creative. And my suggestion is give them the hard truth where their student is at. Absolutely necessary. But what is being, how are parents being told where their student is at? I think it's very necessary. And when I say this student on a spectrum, she wasn't doing well in first grade, she was failing, she, we found out that she had cerebral palsy, and guess what? Creative T, and one was a dyslexia. Just happened to sit in an archive of four and raised her hand, said, I think I did that student. And my student, my daughter did not have dyslexia. She graduated first in her class at Circa two years ago. So I'm just telling you, you need to give them the hard truth. It's okay if they get mad, but what is being done to involve parents? If their child is failing in reading or failing in.
Question. At each campus, it's a little, it may be a little different, there's parent-teacher conferences. We have data that comes out with our screeners that we have to sit down and have discussions with parents. There are meetings regarding progress, as well as you talked about ARDS and five oh four meetings, we're having that. As we go through and look to the future, it's continuing. We talked about our, our teachers and giving them the language to be able to have those conversations is a step that we need to keep moving towards and things like that. So we've got things in place and we need to continue to build the skill set and pull the parents into the conversation, because like you said, it is a collaborative so that we can continue to move our students forward. And I think another layer of this is not only, and our campuses are working really hard to implement it, and it is in their campus improvement plans, but the students owning their data. This is my data, this is where I stand, I know what I need to do to get to the next level, and they've worked really hard, I'm looking back there at you guys in the back of the room, they've worked really hard to implement those things on their campuses this year. And so that's a layer of it, too. It's the conversations with the parents, it's also the conversations with the students.
About the test scores, in the years I've been on the board, I've become, you know, just more and more thoroughly convinced that the test scores really do not represent the learning of our students. And their levels of knowledge at tests, how well they take tests. And when they continually change the tests and continually change the, move the goalposts, then scores mean even less. And it just seems that we don't want to put too much emphasis on, on, on the test scores because they don't necessarily give you the whole picture. And there is a whole lot more going on in our campuses, and our students are, you're on campus and see the success that they're experiencing and the atmosphere that they're learning in. And it's, it's very rewarding and very encouraging. And I really appreciate all that the teachers and staff do to create that environment for our kids, because I think they're doing great. And everybody needs a little help, we all can always do better, that's, we're never going to stop trying to do better. But I, I think that an overemphasis on these test scores and the fact that the state can't even pull it together, to get something legal to, to post about it because they keep changing everything so much, is indicative that they really don't mean as much as some people would like to think that they mean, I think.
One last time, anybody else have any more questions? All right, we'll close this portion of the public hearing and move on to our superintendent's report. In that report, we have the financial report with the budget and property value update. Our presenter is Mike White, our chief financial officer.
Let's see here. So as he said, tonight, we're coming to you for our first discussion about the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Just to set the stage from last session, you'll recall a couple of key highlights. We've got a historic surplus of thirty-three billion dollars as a result of a number of things, thriving economy in the state, property value increases, those kinds of things. A lot of that came back in the form of property tax relief. So continued to prioritize that in, in the session. I think that the forty thousand dollar homestead increase increased to a hundred thousand dollars last session, and we'll talk a lot, a little bit more about those priorities in the session as well. Safety and security mandates, as you'll recall, in House Bill Three was included a little bit of, I say a little bit, fifteen thousand dollars per campus and a ten dollars per student to help with the new security and safety requirements. Just as an example, that for a six hundred student campus, that would be about twenty-one thousand dollars last session. So definitely progress, but not all the way there. And then school choice and school finance, I kind of married the two here, because as you recall, last session, went four special sessions deep through November of twenty-three, I think it was, and ultimately a stalemate on, on both. No additional funding in school choice was, was not passed. Starting off, in recent weeks, the governors highlighted some emergency items. I came out with a press release on the second of February, detailed couple of a number of emergency items. And what makes these unique is these can, action can be taken, bills can be filed and passed through the House and Senate in the early, in the sixty, first sixty days of the session. So property tax relief, again, following up on that, a commitment on increasing teacher salaries, an expansion of CTE programs, an increase in funding for safety and security. And then the most, the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room is, is school choice. So probably the issue, just like the ADA session, the primary issue for the, for the governor, lieutenant governor, came in the form of Senate Bill Two coming out of the Senate. That was a billion dollars allocated for education savings accounts, parent choice, whatever you want to call it, with a base level of ten thousand dollars for those accounts for parents. An additional twenty-five, actually, that should be fifteen hundred dollars for special needs students. And then if you're a homeschool student, two thousand dollars as a base, and then a twenty-five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars more, so twenty-five hundred in total if you have a student with special needs. So one of the things that's unique about what's happened so far is that unlike the last session, there's universal access to this. So we're not talking about students that were in private school or public school or any of those kind of conditions, unless more people apply than funds are available, right? So if, if we have a billion dollars set aside, the current bill, if only nine hundred million dollars was requested, every kid would be approved, right? But if we had one point one billion dollars, dollars in applications for those programs, they have an eighty-twenty split, that being that eighty percent of the money, I guess eight hundred million here, would be dedicated to students that were previously in public schools and were lower income or had disabilities. Whereas the other twenty percent would be for the rest, the rest of the students. So both the eighty percent and twenty percent would be lotteries in those cases. So depending on what kind of student you had and your condition, of course, all the, the specifics to be fleshed out, you know, if this does pass ultimately. So those are definitely interesting to watch. Let me go back for just a second. I'll say that the, the thing we're watching this week, and that is, could come out any day now, is, is the House introducing their own bill about school choice. So I've heard rumor that could be later this week, both their school choice bill and, you know, some other things related to how they're going to fund public schools, which they haven't disclosed yet. So on the eighth, we had an interesting update that caused a little bit of a stir, was a tweet that was interpreted to be an admission by the, by the governor that funding ESA's would defund schools. And I just put that on here, I wanted to make sure that, he later clarified that only defunding the schools in the way that the dollars follow the kids. So he's saying this isn't a change, I wasn't referring to defunding schools out of the funds that are available. They've made a special point throughout the process to, to talk about these funds coming from a, from a separate allocation and not for the funds set aside for public education. So, and then on the February eighteenth, here we are, waiting on the House's action. I will say that, like the governor and the lieutenant governor, the Speaker of the House made a comment also on social media that confirmed that, the confidence that the, it'll pass through the House as well. So they're committed to, to seeing an ESO, ESA bill get through the House. Just, this was a slide that was included last year, I just wanted to give an update on what the Bionile revenue estimate looked like, is up about three point three percent from last, from last session. So that is up to a hundred ninety-four point six billion, and you recall, that was with the historic surplus. So the current challenges, this is the number one challenge that, that we really talk about in public ed and, and have since two thousand nineteen. Our base funding level has been set at that amount with no change. During that time, the, as you guys know, you see it in everything from price of buying a home to the price of eggs, right, has gone up significantly during that time. So that's a real challenge, because everything, everything we buy, everything we have delivered, the shipping cost, the fuel, the cost of insurance, all those things are kind of adding, adding insult to injury when it comes to funding our district. I thought this was a great summary here in that it shows the similarities between the, the budget bills filed by both the House and Senate. You can see here, they already have, they list the guaranteed yield on the golden pennies, we have a few of those. That's currently in law, so that's actually not a change, but, you know, it's in there regardless. Property tax relief, very similar. Of course, the Senate continues to prioritize increasing the homestead as opposed to more tax rate compression, whereas the House prefers that model. Education savings accounts, you can see there, both have a billion dollars in the budget bill, right? The thing I would highlight to you is really that fourth, fourth line there, whereas the Senate dedicates all the additional funds for changes to the TIA, additional funding there, and increasing teacher pay. The House at least introduced and, and a very, much more generic school finance budget bill at this point. Interesting to see what that looks like in coming weeks. And of course, safety and security, this is a two hundred million dollar allotment, that, we talked about that being about twenty-one thousand dollars per campus, for an average campus, that would be, that would double exactly to about forty-two thousand dollars. So still kind of pales in comparison to what it costs to hire an officer and equip them and, and train them and whatnot, but it's progress, so it's worth noting. So what to watch? Interesting to see, you know, when we left the last session, most of the push was behind the basic allotment, you know, the one thing that most public schools support because it's, you know, basically cornerstone of our funding. And that hasn't really been discussed at all, which is concerning, given our lack of new funding since two thousand nineteen. There's also a lot of talk in, in recent sessions and some progress about special populations, right? Dyslexia and various special ed, special education populations and the way that, the way the special education is funded, that's going to be a likely aspect of, of the final version of, of what gets passed. And then the methodology for tax relief. Right now, it seems as though most of the talk is about the increase in the homestead exemption, but, you know, compression is something we've dealt with in recent years as well. So I, I don't know exactly what that will look like, I'm sure that's a big part of the negotiation. And for us specifically, we're still in a, in a model, a financial model that's based on student growth, right? The number of kids that walk through our doors every day and the kind of kids they are. So that's a, something we spend a lot of time talking about, projecting. A demographer has it roughly three and a half percent, I think. So continuing to see that progress is something that is important to our budget. Property values, this is another important part of both the MNO budget and the INS budget. We got the comptroller values for two thousand four, released January thirty-first, going through the same appeals process we went through last year, which we found to be pretty fruitful, with that additional funding coming in and being received in August. Starting that process, we should know around spring break if that will be advantageous for us as well. In April, we have a key milestone here, we have preliminary values released from the, from the CAD. So that will tell us, you know, the, the State of the Union in terms of what does our, you know, tax base look like? And then of course, certified values coming by July twenty-fifth. And that will greatly inform, you know, ensure that we can pay for the schools we've built and the bonds we pass and those kinds of things. So again, we've used very conservative estimates in previous presentations to the board and in bond sales. So not anticipating any surprises there, but they may come down a little bit, come down to earth compared to a couple of years ago when we were growing so much. The budget process, I'm going to include this in every meeting, just so you guys understand kind of where we're at in the process. This is something that was included in the last board book. We're on the back half of February, so we're really kind of getting into the, you know, making the sausage and figuring out, talking to departments and campuses and working a lot on position control and, and balancing our, our campuses and the needs they have based on the growth and where that growth is, the type of growth we have. So a lot of internal discussions and work, kind of get into some of the non-payroll departmental requests in March, of course, depending on, you know, available funding and going through new personnel requests. And then really, coming back in April to the board, I took April board meeting to, to give you the first look at that. You know, you might call that budget draft number one, you know, budget workshop, whatever you'd like to refer to it. But really, that's, we'll know a lot more, you know, in eight weeks than we know now. And of course, this looks a lot different if we have additional funding. Right now, we're working on the assumption, I mean, you can't count your chickens until they hatch, I think, something like that. So I'm hoping they do in the next eight weeks, particularly if, if it's part of the, one of the emergency bills that, that gets through. Coming back in May and ultimately adopting the budget in June, tax rate in August, all those normal legally required steps. So I ran through it quickly, but I, I threw it a lot at you, and if you have any questions about any piece of that, just let me know. I've got to answer anything.
Have you been aware as far as increasing that allotment? And have there been any numbers during the sessions? And have there been any numbers during the sessions as far as what they're looking at?
Well, I wish they were looking at it.
Oh, they're not even looking at it.
The lack of discussion about it is the most troubling thing, particularly when we picked, was a major talking point in the last session. So I'm hoping the Senate's, I'm sorry, the House's budget bill, as that kind of gets fleshed out with specifics, I hope it's included because when we left last time, it was, you know, they were talking about basic allotment of 6,600. That would be amazing. That would do a lot of things for our teachers and our programs. So every day, you know, we're watching the news, waiting for those discussions. Of course, you know, Thursday, there's a Senate hearing about some of the things they're working on. But no, again, I've just heard rumors, talk of the House coming out with something later this week.
What about funding as far as instead of average daily attendance? Any discussion on enrollment?
Yeah, moving to, yeah, I mean, it's come up particularly with, in relation to the ESA discussion because they're talking about giving those folks, funding that on a per student basis, not on a per ADA basis that I've seen. So we're not held to that standard, we're held to a higher standard. So not a lot of traction, honestly, but I hope so. I hope that, you know, we're all facing attendance challenges post-COVID, so not, I'm not seeing a really bill with a lot of momentum.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one quick thing, two quick things. So I'm going to be the squeaky wheel probably every month when you come up and share that slide as you're out on campuses and looking at things, ways to improve, but student services like MTSS and the things we need to budget for this cycle that we made some cuts, some pretty deep cuts last time, definitely still want to keep asking that question for our campuses. So it's, I know we don't have the money, I know we don't have any extra dollars just, you know, growing in the backyard. But, you know, it's, I'm just going to keep bringing it up, so.
Yeah, please do.
I appreciate all you're doing to try to squeeze everything you can out of a dollar.
Yes, ma'am, that feedback informs what we do. We're having discussions about that almost every day with principals, so I imagine that will be a big part, front and center throughout the next couple of months.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other board member have any comments? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to our police department report, safety and security report, the state mandated under Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, Article 2.132B, the racial profiling report. Our presenter is Scott Bunch, Chief of Police, Director of Safety and Security.
Thank you so much. The state mandates that by May, March 1st of each year that we have to send a racial profiling report. The state, years ago, would allow school districts that had their own police departments to file for exempt status because we typically don't operate in a traffic-driven world, which most other police departments do. However, five years ago, they said, no, you'll need to send your information as well, which doesn't make it real hard for us because we don't stop a lot of traffic. I prefer that we don't, I prefer that we're in our schools and keeping our kids safe. We do have some that go out and about and work the streets because we have to cover all our campuses, and the ones that do currently right now also have our canine dogs, our narcotics dogs. And so how we have to do this is because we have to show our population for the city, we have to show our population for the county, and then we have to show our demographic and our population for the school district. So we're compared in all those ways. And so you'll see that of all the traffic stops, we're into 288 traffic stops. How many of those are on city streets? How many of those are on county roads? How many of those are on state highways? And then we'll take that and we'll ask the question of was race or ethnicity known prior to the traffic stop? And out of 288 traffic stops, no, it was not known until after the traffic stop occurred. You'll see the, and we list the race or ethnicity of the individuals that we stopped, and you'll see that majority of the stops are white. And so again, we look at the demographics of the city, the county, and of the school district. You'll see the gender, male, female, and also the reason for the stop, violation of law, pre-existing knowledge, moving traffic violation, and non-moving vehicle traffic violation. And so we list those out, again, listing by race, ethnicity. Was a search conducted, yes or no? You'll see the majority of the time, there was no search conducted, there were only very few. Reason for the search, consent given, contraband, probable cause, and most time the probable cause is because they either see it, smell it, or they have a dog that determines that smell. And so that's the reason for the majority of ours, probable cause exists, and so that's the reason for the search. Was contraband discovered? And you'll see out of all the searches, yes, no, depending on, again, the number of searches that were done. And then we have to describe the contraband, was it drugs, currency, weapons, alcohol, stolen property? And we'll see, it's drugs, typically that's the one we're going to see, smell, or the dog's going to hit on. And the result of the stop, how many verbal warnings, written warnings, citations, written warning or arrest, citation, interest or arrest? And the majority of ours are written warning citations. You don't see verbal warnings anymore because that's also part of the racial profiling stuff, that we keep a written document of who we stop. But very few actually are written citations, and majority of all that we do are warnings. Arrests based on violation of the penal code, violation of traffic law, violation of city ordinance, outstanding warrants. You'll see the majority of ours, again, are from either violation of the law or it's for an outstanding warrant. And was physical force used? Nope. And so none of our stops. And that's our racial profiling. What we have to do is we simply have to present it to you, we have to say that our governing body saw it, and then I can upload it to the state. Do y'all have any questions as far as racial profiling?
All right. No questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you all so much.
Next, we'll move to our academic report. The academic report is for information only. Does any board member have any questions regarding the academic report? If not, we'll move on to the human resources reports. The human resources report is for information only. Does any board member have any questions regarding the human resources report? And there's a facilities and operations report as well, it's for information only. Does any board member have any questions for the facilities and operations report? Moving on to the consent agenda, would any board member like to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion?
I would like to just not pull it, but get a little better understanding on Topic E, considering the memorandum of understanding between the workforce solution, rural capital area workforce, and education outreach. Looked into this a little bit more, I think it's going to be a good idea. My only concern was that this may cause an undue burden on some of the staff, you know, taking away from teaching, causing them to stay there, okay, till 7:05, but it is, I mean, it sounds good, and I'm, I'll approve, you know, I'll go along with it, but I'm just concerned about overburdening these folks.
I don't think it's overburdening, I think it's definitely assistance and help, it's supplemental. So bringing in, they would help us get guest speakers, like for instance in our eighth grade college and career exploration class, bringing in, you know, people from SpaceX that we met today to come in and speak. So it's, it's not a burden.
There's not, okay, I guess I looked at it to where there was a team or a group that...
Oh, the educational outreach specialists?
Yeah.
So ours, we have one assigned to our district, and so we would work with them. If a teacher, you know, if there were a certain program or a certain topic that a teacher might want, they would help us find those resources or bring those in and do some presentations with the students.
So you're not taking a teacher or a staff and...
No, no, it's the outside.
Okay, that was my misunderstanding, that's why I wanted clarification.
Yes, they're coming.
Thank you.
Yes.
Were there any other items on the consent agenda to be discussed? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our action items, to consider the approval of the 2025-2026 academic calendar. Our presenter is Kendra Monk, Director of Leadership Development and School Improvement. Ms. Monk.
Hello, good evening. We're going to look at our 25-26 academic calendar together tonight. We'll be sharing some options around what the stakeholders are able to look at. So the first thing we want you to know about are the calendar parameters. So these are things that we've been following for a few years, that our calendars recognize ending by June 1st. We do recognize certain federal holidays. And then most importantly is that our teacher contract days are exactly 187 days. So that's really the first place we start, is making sure that we have enough contract days for our teachers, followed by ensuring that we have at least 75,600 minutes for We create some, several drafts, so the drafts that just went out for voting, those were probably seven or eight drafts in before we sent them out to the public. So the District Improvement Committee begins looking at drafts, and they make suggestions, and we create more drafts based on their first meeting. We also sent information out to our parent and community volunteers list, so these are all the people in the district that said that they would like to volunteer or help the district in some way, and so they were able to provide input. Our campus administrators looked at several versions of the calendars, and then finally, we recently had our final draft voting, and this goes out to everybody, everybody. So staff, students, families, community members, and that went out in several different ways, social media, text messages, it was in several newsletters. And then we're here today for our recommendation. Now, what you see on the screen here is a very busy table, but we're comparing Draft A and Draft B that were just sent out for voting. We wanted you to see that compared to our current 24-25 school year and also the 23-24 school year. So just so you can see some side-by-side comparisons of how this looks year over year. So you can see for a total number of instructional days, we've been pretty much hitting that 169 days, which does equal more than the minutes that we need. On here, you see a lot of similarities, Thanksgiving break, the same, our student winter break, you know, differs by just a day or so, our spring break does align with ACC because we partner with them for some of our coursework. Continuing on the draft comparison, you'll see a comparison between the staff development or preparation days that we have, and typically, we've been having about 18 days. One of the drafts this year did show 16 days. And then you can see the first and last teacher contract days and then graduation dates. So with that, the responses this year came up that 62.6% of the voters determined that Draft A would be the best calendar for us for our 25-26 school year. Are there any questions about our calendar work?
I want a question, I just want to, I just want to look at Draft A.
Oh, Draft...
One more time, yeah.
Any other questions I can answer about the calendars?
On the staff and community responses, I know that just goes out to, we get the email with kids in the school, of course, and we submit it. That's fairly representative of past years as well, isn't it? About the same number?
We typically, the past four years, we've seen anywhere between 1,500 and 2,000 responses. So this is pretty typical.
Big of a difference between Draft A and Draft B.
That is correct.
Usually it's 51, 49.
Yes, usually very close.
Yeah.
So there was, so, and like I said, these went through several iterations of drafts, and so these were so fine-tuned, they were almost identical at this point, but there was just something about Draft A that people really, really liked. So our recommendation is that the board adopt Calendar A for the 2025-2026 school year.
Dr. Mick, since you've got the big number, would you mind making the motion?
Approve the 2025-2026 Bastrop ISD school calendar as presented.
I have a second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Next, we'll move on to the Consider Approval of Revision to Policy EIC Local-X. Our presenter is Jennifer Everly, our Chief Academic Officer. Ms. Everly.
Okay, good evening, board and Mr. Edwards. Tonight, I'm presenting revisions to Policy EIC Local regarding academic achievement and class ranking. Right now, when a student transfers into BISD from another district, honors, dual credit, and AP courses are given extra weight for GPA and class rank only if a similar course is offered at the BISD high school they are transferring to. With the new language in EIC Local ensures that the same process applies to transfers within the district. The course will still be listed as an advanced course on the student's transcript, with its weight matching the equivalent course offered at the receiving high school. This situation doesn't occur often, but this ensures consistency in the way transfers are handled, giving all students in BISD an equal opportunity for class rank. Any questions on the EIC Local?
Classes that we offer at VHS that we don't offer at CCHS that wouldn't honor classes?
Sometimes there may be due to staffing or what's being offered. Some of the other ones would be with the early college high school and moving over, they attend advanced classes earlier than our comprehensive high schools do, and so this is just addressing the transfers between all of that.
Okay. Thank you.
The student wouldn't lose the honor class or the AP, they just wouldn't get that extra bonus.
So it would still, on their transcript, when they get it, it would still say English Dual Credit or Pre-Calculus AP. It would still have all of that on there, it just wouldn't be the weighting so that we had the equal, the consistency across the campus for all students. Welcome. Any other questions?
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the revision to Policy ELC Local X as presented.
You have a second?
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our information items, there's a Board of Trustees Calendar of Events, Enrollment and Policy Update Number 124 for information only. Does any board member have anything to bring before the school board before adjourned? If not, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.